This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our January Board of Selectment meeting, and happy new year to everyone. I hope you had a wonderful holiday. I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's first selectman, joined by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Bowemy. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, any public comments to the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move to item number three, the approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen on December 4th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Is there a second?
I will second that approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, on the first selectman overview, the only thing I have tonight that I want to mention is some very important meetings coming up. And these are posted on our website. Wanted to just take a moment to review it here with the public who's come tonight and for those watching on North Haven TV. So we're going to be approaching now, very shortly, the workshop sessions for all of the different departments. These meetings will be televised. The department heads will come up in front of the Board of Finance and present their requests for their different departments as we move towards a May referendum. So I wanted to let everyone know that the first meeting is on Saturday, January 11th, and three departments will come before us: the library, the community services recreation, and the fire department. On Wednesday, the 15th of January, at the regular meeting of the Board of Finance, the Public Works Department will be before us. On Saturday, February 1st, it's IT and the Board of Education. And on Wednesday, February 19th, it's the regular meeting, again, of the Board of Finance and the registrar, the assessor, the town clerk, tax collector, and the police department will come before us. And then Wednesday, March 19th, at the regular Board of Finance meeting, there'll be a budget workshop to finalize what the budget looks like at that point, and then I'll be taking it to present to the public in April, at an April meeting. So we'll continue to reiterate this even next month. Very important budget cycle. So I hope everybody attends, and hope we have an active audience for this. Thank you. Sally, Bill, anything you'd like to say?
No.
Okay. So tonight, most of the business here is resignations and appointments. So I'm going to turn this over to Sally and Bill to go through these one by one.
Okay, I'll start, Bill. I will make a motion for the appointment of Alexa Johnson, 50 Fallon Drive, to the Cemetery Commission for term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Is there a second?
I will second Alexa's appointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I know, Alex, this is something that you like to do, and you've been very passionate about this. So we're going to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Well, should we have some discussion first?
Oh, okay. Oh, I didn't ask for discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just know that I'm very much in favor of this appointment. I've reviewed Alexa's resume, and she certainly is qualified, and I'm confident will do a great job. So my comment is more about the Cemetery Commission itself. Of late, and of late, by "of late," I mean the last few years, it hasn't really come back from the hiatus that it was on from COVID. And it hasn't really met that much. And I was reviewing, a couple of nights ago, the ordinance that established the Cemetery Commission. And they certainly were given by the town meeting quite an array of responsibilities in that ordinance. So I'm just taking this opportunity, because we have an appointment to the Cemetery Commission, taking this opportunity to say that I hope that they return to their quarterly meetings and take the active role that was intended by the passage of that ordinance, which, to my knowledge, has never been amended or withdrawn. So it is still a good law here in our town. And so, again, I enthusiastically support Alexa's appointment, and I'm just hopeful that it will rev up a little bit and perform its duties assigned to it by the town meeting many years ago. Thank you.
Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Alex. Okay, next.
Next is, I'll make a motion for the appointment of Maria J. Dean, 21 Weathers Road, to the Community Services Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2027.
Second?
All right, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
I will make a motion for the appointment of Nancy Barrett, 1 Crestview Drive, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Board of Finance for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second Nancy's appointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
I'll motion for the reappointment of Sandra Stetson, 542 Middletown Avenue, to the Open Space Advisory Commission, I'm sorry, the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Conservation Commission for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Second?
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I will make a motion for the reappointment of Mary Lou Stamp, 134 Middletown Avenue, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second that reappointment of Mary Lou.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll motion for the reappointment of Brian Cummings, 107 Clintonville Road, the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second?
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I will make a motion for the reappointment of Mark Cofrancesco, 6 Frost Drive, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Land Trust for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll motion for the reappointment of Cheryl Ann Junewick, 101 Nowood Road, the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands Commission for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
A second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I will make a motion for the reappointment of Stephen J. Fitzgerald, 34 River Road, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the first selectman for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2025.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
You know, I just thought, as a little educational point here, people may be wondering, what is this? And why are all these coming from these different commissions? The Open Space Advisory Committee is an ad hoc committee. I believe it was created by ordinance. And it was established to advise the Board of Selectmen on potential open space matters. We've had several over the years, some purchases, some conservation easements, and the like. So, and according to the ordinance that established the committee, there's about six selected other boards and commissions that vote amongst themselves for a representative. So that's why you kept hearing on the recommendation of inland wetlands, or Board of Finance, or Planning and Zoning, because that's how we form this. It's a little different from the usual process. And then the final one, Mr. Fitzgerald, which we're about to act on, is the first selectman's choice, which is also granted to you by the ordinance. So I just thought, since this is a little unusual, people hear us do these appointments all the time, this is a little different. I thought I would just explain it to those who care. Thank you.
And I think that's a very good point. Because after we conduct this last one, I wanted to just share something with the public on how we operate on the other side of this, with all these boards and commissions that are appointed. So I'll get to that in a moment, okay?
Sure. This one's a little different, yeah.
This one is different. It's a point of distinction, yes. All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. We had some discussion. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
So this ties into Sally's point. So, just for the general public watching, the way this works is there are elected positions, there are appointed positions, and then there's the positions that Sally was just mentioning that by ordinance have to be recommended by either a board, or in this case, the last gentleman, Stephen, by me, to endorse it. So the elected positions, you have to run for office to do that. Now, on the appointed positions, this government, since I've been here, has always wanted to maintain a balance of representation on these commissions: the unaffiliates, the Republicans, and the Democrats. That's on the appointed commission side. So our operating procedure here is that every year, or every other year, whenever terms expire, we send a letter out to the people who are on these commissions, the appointed commissions. And we ask them if they want to continue. We don't throw anybody off. I remember when I first started in this government, I wasn't in this position. Back then, 17 members of one party were thrown off and replaced by the other party. We've never done that here, and we'll never do that. So recently, it's been brought up to me, and I thought this was a good point, Sally and Bill. It was brought up to me by somebody who I've worked closely with, who was a member of the Democratic Town Committee. And they said, "Mike, when we have members of our party who are up for to be reappointed, would you consider coming to us first to see if we want to reappoint them, or put someone else from our party on the commission?" I said, "No, if that's what you'd like, we'll certainly do that." So I think that, based on that feedback, we, if that's the feedback that's going to be consistent, before we send a letter out to those who are being, who want to come back, who may be members of either unaffiliated or the Republican Party or Democratic Party, we're open to having the party share with us whether or not they want that person to remain, or to have someone else that they want to appoint. So I wanted to point that out. That was recently brought to my attention. But this government will always maintain the fact that if there's a U, or an R, or a D, whichever one of those letters, those party affiliations, if they're coming off that commission, they will be replaced by the same member, by their own, by the party affiliation. May not be that one, maybe that person will resign. But what we will not do is, in this case, if a D doesn't want to do it, a Democrat on these commissions, we will not replace that position with a Republican. You'll have the balanced minority representation on the appointed positions.
Well, let's be very clear that the Republican Town Committee and the Democratic Town Committee can only make a recommendation. You said before, if the DTC appoints. They don't appoint.
They make the recommendation.
We appoint.
Right, right.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to correct that and make that clear, that the two town committees recommend.
Right.
And we, by charter, do the actual appointments. Now, with elected positions, by charter, if, for example, someone resigns from the Board of Finance, which is an elected position, we have to, by charter, within 60 days, appoint someone from the same party.
Yes.
We don't have to do that with the appointed parties. So that has been your way of operations, which I support. But I just want people to be aware, there is a distinction between what you must do by charter with the elected positions. There's not only a time limit, but a same party. And the appointed, which I am not aware of a time limit, and there's no requirement. And then, of course, there's also a statute that limits each commission, there can't be any more than a certain number of one party. They call it the Minority Party Representation Statute, but it really, it doesn't say what the minimum must be. It says, no more than a certain number can be from one party. So we have those factors, the charter and that statute, to work within. But I understand what you're saying. And the other thing that you should be aware of, especially with the appointed positions, for example, Community Services is a nine-member commission. It's where I started, a long time ago. It's staggered. There's only three people that come up for reappointment every year. And that's why Community Services has a three-year term. Then there's other boards that are appointed, like the Sewer Commission, that's a four-year. And, you know, so it's, not everybody is replaced. That wouldn't be prudent to replace everybody at the same time, because you need experienced people. You know, it allows for continuity of the function of the board in that only three people on a board of nine. And I think aging might be nine. I don't have it all. You have the charter there.
I have it here, Sally. Just, and I think it's very good, very good discussion on your part. And I was, just for people's benefit, I mean, if I look at Chapter 6 of the town charter, you know, it mentions, and it, you know, and there may be, you know, you know, it may not be inclusive, because we have a couple more that we now maybe have created by...
By ordinance, that's right.
By ordinance.
Right.
But appointed boards and commissions, it starts with Park and Recreation Commission, it's seven members.
Right.
Police Retirement Board, and it doesn't specify, but the ordinance probably does, how many members are in the Police Retirement Board. And then it goes into, just as you were saying, and you're correct, an Agent Commission of nine members, Board of Ethics, five members, just like you pointed out, Community Service Commission...
Is nine.
...of nine members.
Yeah.
Conservation Commission of seven members, Economic Development Commission of nine members, Housing Authority of five members, and Inland Wetlands Commission of seven members, and a Library Board of nine members.
Right.
All listed in the charter.
Right. And many of them...
And it does mention exactly what you talked about, because it's staggering it.
Yes.
So we don't lose all the commission members, you know, at once. And they may be anywhere from four-year to three-year terms, or whatever.
Kind of like what they do with the United States Senate. Only a third of them are up for, they have six-year terms. Only a third of them come up for election every two years. So that's what we do with those appointments. So there's a lot of different factors. Not everybody comes up for reappointment at the same time.
That's right. So we wanted to spend...
Little lesson here in our charter. Read the charter, it's fun.
We thought it was important to bring this up tonight. I didn't realize Sally was going to bring up what she did, and I'm glad you did.
Yeah.
Because I was going to summarize it, the way I tried to earlier, that to kick off this new year, the boards and commissions, not only in this government, but other governments, other municipalities, is very important to have proper minority, majority representation. And in the appointed boards, the unaffiliates. So we wanted to review that with you tonight. Valerie does a great job for us here in terms of managing this in this office. And so, but I wanted to bring up tonight that we here internally, we're going to have to make a decision, Val, whether we just send the letters out without consulting with the other party as to whether or not that's a member that they want us to appoint.
Right, that would be your decision.
Right, so. It was brought to my attention. I had never thought of it that way. Because for years, we're just saying to the people, we're not going to kick, we're saying to ourselves, we're not going to kick the people off. We appreciate what they've done here. So we just give them the option of saying, would you like to continue? And it's very rare when someone says that they don't want to continue. It does happen when they move out of town, as an example.
Yeah. And then that should, even though this idea of this change came from the DTC, it should apply to both, you know, both town committees. Another option, and again, this is the first I'm hearing of this. You didn't know I was going to give a little lesson about the Open Space Advisory Committee. I didn't know you were going to bring this up. But another option is, you know, when you see that somebody is, somebody's term is about to come to an end, you've been contacting them and saying, you know, do you want to reserve? And if they do, they go on. One kind of middle of the ground is tell them, you know, okay, you're up, and this would be for Democrats, Republicans. I don't know where you'd go for the unaffiliates, though.
Yeah.
That's, that makes it a little tricky.
Tricky, right.
Because we have unaffiliates on, I think, all of our appointed boards. So, you know, if it's unfair that you would be making Rs and Ds go through a process, but there's no unaffiliated town committee.
No.
Right. Although it's a good, it's an idea. But you could say, if you want to stay on, your term is coming up, or about to expire, contact your appropriate town committee, send them a resume, and, you know, that's like a kind of a middle of the ground, where you're not automatically just recommending what the town committee says. You're not automatically putting the person who's already on, on again, if that's their desire. You're alerting them to a process, kind of like a middle of the ground, but, you know.
I kind of feel like if you have someone who's on a board or a commission, and they're doing a good job, and they're participating, because that's the key, sometimes both parties could recommend someone, and that individual does not participate in the way that perhaps they should.
Yes, we have that problem right now, yes.
Yes, so if someone is on a board, and they're participating, and they're a valuable member of that board, I feel like if they choose to continue, they should be allowed to continue. That's my personal opinion.
They should be coming to us as to why we should reappoint them with some sort of proof of a certain percentage of meetings attended, because that is a problem. People are getting these appointments and not attending.
Well, that's happening. You're absolutely right. Yes, that's happening.
So, and we really don't monitor that. That's for chairs to monitor. But all I'm saying is, whatever you do, you have to keep in mind the problem with the unaffiliates. You have to keep in mind that it should equally apply on both sides. And maybe there's some sort of middle ground. That's all that I would suggest, but this is...
So the way it's worked...
...for you to think about.
It's food for thought.
Yeah.
As far as the unaffiliates, what we've always tried to do is make sure that they're represented. And generally, they would come to me. The public comes to me if they're unaffiliates, and they say, "Hey, Mr. Frieda, we'd like to be considered. Send us a resume. I'll look at it, and then I'll bring it here."
We got one of those, came to me as well, this week, yeah.
So, that is kind of an overview on how it works. And you saw several variations tonight: the elected positions, the appointed positions, and the ones that Sally brought up, the ones that are recommended by the individual boards themselves. So, thank you for listening.
Okay.
All right, next, property tax. We'd like to handle that.
I will make a motion to approve the one and only, very unusual, property tax refund reflected in our agenda.
Okay, there's a second.
I'll second that refund.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next meeting of this Board of Selectmen is Thursday, February 6th, here at the top floor of Memorial Town Hall. And now we're at the point, ladies and gentlemen, public comment. Mary White.
Happy New Year, Mary White, Summer Lane. Two topics tonight. So I wanted to remind everybody about the town meeting on January 7th, Tuesday, right here at the Town Hall, in this conference room at 6 o'clock. And it was discussed last month, but I just want to do a little refresher for people. So it's to vote on three things. So the first one is for $2,800,000 for milling and paving of town roads. And I took some notes. Church Street equals matched, transfer station parking lot, Saca Point Bridge to State Street, northeast firehouse parking lot, 7.4 miles of town road paved. The second item to vote on, $450,000 for repairs, improvements, and replacement to roofs and other structural elements of various town buildings, including but not limited to the roof and repairs of the town pool. The third item to vote on is $1,250,000 for the acquisition of refuse containers and the related equipment to facilitate curbside collection. So all of these items are needed, and I think people should come to the meeting and, on January 7th at 6 o'clock, and vote yes.
Yeah, and thanks for bringing that up, Mary. I appreciate it. And that's something we should have brought up here, so I appreciate you coming up and mentioning that. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to mention that. And the second topic I wanted to discuss, bring up, is the subject of the street takeovers, particularly the recent one of December 28th at 2:00 AM on Monoise Avenue, the intersection with the I-91 North off-ramps. So there was a video posted showing on Monoise. So there was a circle of fire with people standing in the middle of it, as well as people standing outside the circle of fire, watching from near the curb. And so something flammable had to have been previously poured on the ground and then lit on fire to create that ring of fire. And a white vehicle, believed to be a 2016 Dodge Charger, a four-door is seen speeding around and around the circle. And two pedestrians were struck by that white vehicle. So when the police arrived, the two pedestrians who had been struck were gone. So police later determined the two individuals struck were taken to the hospital by friends or people who were there. So this street takeover is extremely dangerous, reckless, as well as illegal. So on social media, there was a lot of finger pointing going on, and I don't want to discuss that. It's not productive. I wanted to try and discuss some options to try and deal with this. So, I don't know if we need to have more police officers assigned to the overnight. Also, I wanted to discuss cameras. So, since the street takeover was on a town road, Monowies, is there a way we can get cameras on that intersection, and any other intersections that it's a town road, where we, would, they could be mounted, and then they could be watched? So, I understand that we don't have jurisdiction over state roads or federal highways, but I'm thinking we do have jurisdiction on our own town roads.
Right, so, thanks for bringing this up, I'll answer that question first, and then I'll tell you where I am on this whole situation, 'cause I've been all over the news on this, with the news stations interviewing me. We are looking at the cameras, we've asked the police department, they're doing this to map out the locations where the cameras should go, and they're expensive, they're like $40,000 a camera. So, we're waiting to see what the list is, we do have a couple out there now, I don't wanna say where they are, because that then divulges.
Exactly.
Impunes the integrity of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Right.
So, we're looking to broaden that out, and find the money to do that.
Okay.
Now, here's where I am, and you're gonna maybe be surprised by me saying this, but I'm in a no-nonsense mood on this. Every, every news station that's come in here, I said that all of us, at my level, and police chiefs, and police departments, were fed up and were disgusted with this nefarious behavior by these recalcitrants who are out there. They think it's funny, this is, I just said this today in one of the news stations, they think it's funny, we don't find it funny. They can run, but they're not gonna hide, because right now, arrest warrants are being sought for all the participants, everybody who is involved with that street takeover, on Monowies Avenue, whether you're, whether you're standing there, you're a participant, and there will be arrests in this matter. Now, what we're doing on a regional basis is, we started with an ATV task force takeover, a committee, a task force. Myself, and all the other mayors in this region, along with every police chief in this region, we did a press conference, and Mayor Elker was in New Haven, so he asked me to speak first, and here's what I said. We, we held, we held this forum in a place in New Haven, it was a Butler Building, that had ATVs loaded in there. There were ATVs that were confiscated, that were taking, were doing street takeovers in the region. So, Mayor Elker spoke, Mayor of West Haven spoke, I was the second speaker after the mayor of New Haven, and I said that, for those watching who may be considering a street takeover, look behind me, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna find you, and we're gonna confiscate your vehicle, and I went like this, and we're gonna crush these vehicles, looked right in the camera, we're gonna crush these vehicles. Afterwards, the police chief in New Haven said, Mr. Frida, thank you, thank you for the, for the strong talk, we've gotta stop this. So, we started with that. ATV takeovers, Mary, there's hundreds of them, so our strategy is to, we're not gonna get everybody, we'll get six, seven, eight at a time, we're gonna start sending our own messages, confiscate the vehicles, huge fines, and hopefully that acts as a deterrent. Now, on these street takeovers that we're seeing, we're doing the same thing, we're replicating that as mayors and first selectmen, and we've got regional task force with the local police department agencies, we're working with the FBI, we are working with the state police to create a more robust system of intel. The public doesn't realize that we stopped up on Washington Avenue in the summertime, a major street takeover up there, takeover, because of the intel that we had with the collaboration of the federal and the state agencies. So, unfortunately, though, you can't predict where this is going to happen, and that's the problem, to a certain extent, law enforcement is reactive. We could have 100 policemen out in the streets of North Haven every night, and something still could happen. And everybody should know, they should be angry about this, 'cause I'm certainly not happy about it. So, now, we have police respond, and we have to have the fire department respond, to put out that fire. So, God forbid, there was a fire or a robbery on the other side of town at the same time this was happening. So, every taxpayer in town should be as angry as I am about this, because those events deplete resources that we have, that should be used for, or could be used for another major emergency. So, bad behavior has to have bad consequences, and that's where I'm at right now on this. Hopefully, that answers it.
Yes, thank you. I didn't know, is there any type of grant that, for these cameras, since they are so costly?
We're looking at that, yes.
That we could look into?
We are, we are definitely looking at that, yes.
All right.
But I wanna repeat something I said, and Mary was nodding her head, so that's why I wanna repeat this, that we're not gonna tell everybody where these cameras are, that defeats the purpose of the cameras themselves.
Yes, that's good. And so, just before I leave, I just wanna go back and remind everybody, this coming Tuesday, January 7th, 6 o'clock, right here, come and vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With these street takeovers, not the ATVs so much, but like this most recent one, are you finding in talking with other mayors and first selectmen in other towns, you said you, you can't really tell where they're gonna show up, but is there any statistic showing they're more likely to be by highway exits, and then, you know, so they can make a quick getaway, isn't it more likely that it's, they would be, you know, and we have, of course, we have Exit 9, we have 10, 11, 13?
Yes, it is more likely. It's more likely, and also, it's more likely because, and the, the other night's a good example, it's not just North Haven, they're, they're, by having the easy access of off the major arteries, they're doing the street takeovers in multiple cities and towns on the same night, so, because they're in, and they're out. They create havoc, we had a situation, I think it was earlier in the year, on Universal Drive again, where there was a tremendous street takeover, police responded, broke it up, and guess what happened? There was a call, a 911 call, for a medical emergency, where the ambulance couldn't get in because of the street takeover. Everybody should be very angry about this.
Yes, I, I agree with you. I, I find it interesting, 'cause if you look at just here in our town, our exits and entrances to 91, all but Monowies are along Route 5, which is a state road. So, you wonder, did they pick Monowies because they know it's a town road, and might have less resources? You know, obviously, we need state help for this. This can't be just, although I, I admire your affiliation and, and your organization of first selectmen and mayors, 'cause you all have to work together, but we really need the state legislature on this, especially if you're talking about harsh penalties and criminal ramifications, that has to come from Hartford.
Yes, yes.
So, we need help there.
We do.
But, I, I, yeah, I was, I saw the video, and was, was just as angry as you, because it's a waste of our resources for.
It is, right.
Someone, a group of people to have fun.
Right.
It's not a funny thing.
So, on my list of priorities on this, is something that I recently learned, and I was surprised, I didn't know this, that there was legislation passed in the last session that allows the municipalities to create an ordinance that will fine people by catching them, I think it's 2,500 hours a car. So, this, unfortunately, it sort of got buried in everything else that went on in the session last year, so we're gonna validate that this is true, which I think it is, and then I'm gonna call a town meeting early, later this year, sooner than later, to get an ordinance passed that allows our police department to do that.
There you go, yeah, I agree.
That should send a message.
Yeah.
And I think I'll get, we'll, we'll get a good turnout on that, so. So, it's a, as you can see, I get animated over this issue, but I'm glad that I'm the one that gets the call in the region. I'm the first one that they call, News 8, NBC, today was Fox 61, and I, and, 'cause I wanna, I wanna, I want to talk very seriously about this issue. You'll never hear me say, this ties into Sally's point, oh, our hands are tied, there's not much we can do. You'll never hear me blame the state, no, we take responsibility here for what we can do, and what we're trying to do to accomplish this, to send a message that it's not going to be tolerated. I was in a street takeover a year ago, this past July, coming off of 91, I ran into this ruckus, where I was three cars back, and what do I see? From Upper State Street to Route 5, down Route 22, hundreds and hundreds of cars creating havoc, pointing at other cars, threatening people in cars not to try to cut through the street takeover. I wasn't too happy, folks. I gotta be honest with you, if I wasn't first selectman, I may have gotten out of the car myself. That's how angry I was, because I saw these people, they were, there, some of them were our residents, they were, they were terrified, it's traumatizing. So, this is a very serious situation, but, so when we get to the point of the town meeting, I'm gonna ask people to come, and we're gonna pass this ordinance.
Sally, I don't think we, you know, can rely on the state, because there's a shortage as it is of state police officers, and, you know, and even though they may be state roads, when was the last time you ever saw a state police officer on any of our state highways in town? You never do. They're really only on the major highways like 91 and the, and the Parkway.
I was, I was emphasizing more, Mike had mentioned strict criminal ramifications, fines, that that would have to be state, a state legislation, or.
Yeah, yes.
Or, if there's legislation, like you're saying, that you think allows us as a municipality to pass an ordinance, then, then so be it, but you still need state authority for that, so.
Yes. Can I make another final point on this?
But as far as cameras, that would be up to them to pay for the cameras, if it's their state roads, 'cause Mary White makes a very good point, wondering if there's grant money, because this is gonna be a tough budget season again, with a revale and all of that, let's hope there's some grant money. But, you know, if we're more likely to have these events on one of our exit entrance areas on a state road, I'd like to see state cameras there, that's what I'm saying, there's, so you do need state.
I've been working on that in terms of cameras in general, and there's also, I think as you're, as we're both aware, there's that, all three of us are aware, there's that lawsuit that has been filed against the New Haven in terms of a street, street racing, or drag racing, so.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I, I think, again, what we've fortunately done, I think from a standpoint of a town, and the Board of Finance, and Board of Selectmen, is that we've continued to add much-needed police officers to our, you know, our, our police department, just because increasingly, you know, we can't depend on, you know, maybe getting any support from the state, in terms of actual police presence.
So, I'm gonna share with you one last story, and this should make everybody even more angry. Seven years ago, one of our police officers, a guy who I lift, back then, he was in the gym with me, lifted weights with him many, many times, he's a powerhouse, he's still on the force, 'cause I work out with the cops, as I've mentioned here before, and the firefighters. He intercepts a home invasion, where there was a, a car that pulled up in the driveway, and the guy who was getting out of the car had some sort of weapon on the side, a crowbar, and another weapon on the other side. So, our officer intercepts this, if he wasn't there, can you imagine what would have happened? So, that, this was before there was a no pursuit policy. So, our officer now is chasing this individual, seeking to apprehend him. The individual is traveling northbound on Route 17, crashes into a guardrail, 'cause he's driving recklessly, trying to evade our officer. So, the perpetrator hurts his neck, this is a good example of how the perpetrators become the victims, and the victims become the perpetrators. He goes to the hospital, he sues me, sues the police department, and sues the town of North Haven for half a million dollars, and he was, he was doing a home invasion. So, we get the attorneys involved, so, two months go by, and I get a call from the attorney and insurance company, well, Mr. Frida, they're willing to settle for $400,000, absolutely not, they're not getting a dime out of us. Three weeks later, it went down to 350, then it went down to 300, and at, during these times now, I'm saying, absolutely not. So, they come back about two weeks later, would you accept a settlement of 200,000? No, just like that, you tell them no. Then it went down to 150, they came back to me and wanted to see if we'd settle, and I said, give them a message for me, you tell them that Mike Frida said, go to you-know-where. And the attorney said, we love working with you, Mike. So, now, it gets down to 50,000, they had the gall to come back to me and say, would we settle for $50,000? I said, did you tell them my previous message, where to go? We did. Well, tell them to go back there, I said. Gets down to $10,000, ladies and gentlemen, 10,000. Insurance company said, Mr. Frida, we gotta get rid of this case, it's a nuisance case now. You got $10,000 from the insurance company, and which, which is, we pay the premiums, right? For a home invasion that he was intercepted on, he's still got $10,000. What's wrong with that picture, ladies and gentlemen? So, anyway, that sort of sets the tone for where this government is going, on ATV takeovers, street takeovers, red light cameras, or other cameras, and getting to this town meeting where we try to get this ordinance passed, just have to verify that that language does exist, the way I mentioned it earlier. Anyway, that's where we're at. Any other questions? Brian Testa.
Brian Testa made Bob, just kind of follow up what you just said on the street takeover, I had three things. I messaged you, and what I'm doing as, as a citizen, because these takeovers are social media-driven, Instagram, TikTok, I heard that one, I have a scanner, I've had one forever, and I heard it, and I knew it was gonna be a problem. I've been, like you, I've been involved in these ATV takeovers on Washington Avenue, right stuck in the middle, you know, whereabouts, family. I shared with you the letter that I'm spearheading, hopefully, more people will do it, I'm gonna contact every single legislator with this letter, and I shared it with, with Mike. Our police department can do whatever they want, but if it doesn't come down to the DA's and the prosecutors, and Hartford, giving them the power and the tools to our police department, it's never going to get under control. You can confiscate their vehicles, but until they're adjudicated, found guilty, we can't do anything, like you were saying.
I agree, yeah.
You know, it's, it's, I don't wanna become a communist state, but when these people take over a street, like those two people that got hurt, they weren't pedestrians, they were part of it, and they were at the wrong place at, at the time they got hurt. You wanna do stupid stuff, you're gonna get hurt. I'm hoping that we do something more in town, like with the, with the motorcycles, ATVs that come down the street, and I've heard it, they're coming down from Wallerford, and all our police can do is just follow, make sure they don't get hurt, 'cause they, no pursuit, 'cause once you start to get them to scatter, then you're gonna have problems. So, I'm hoping, I don't know, maybe my, one little voice will get other people involved, it was on, all over the three different Facebook pages in the town, and people liked it, I shared it, and said, do the same thing, contact our legislators, and come up with a more stringent tools to give you as an official, 'cause you can only do so much, our police department can only do so much, but if the laws aren't in place, there's not much we can do, hopefully.
Well, thank you, Brian, I tell you, at our level, at this level of mayors and first selectmen, this is a, this is a bipartisan issue.
Oh, it has to be.
There's, there's nobody, any Republicans or Democrats at my level, that are, that are against what we're trying to accomplish here, because we're where the rubber meets the road, we get all the calls from the citizens, so, and the ATV story was an example, that I shared earlier, it was Mayor Elker in New Haven that kind of created the idea, and the first guy he called was me, he said, hey, Mike, would you be willing to participate in this? I'll definitely be there, I said, and then we got all the other mayors and first selectmen in the region on board.
'Cause unfortunately, governments are reactive.
Yes.
And hopefully, it doesn't happen where a innocent citizen gets killed.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a matter of if, it's gonna happen, it's gonna be that one time where the one person happens to be going to post office, and they get involved in this, or just coming home from dinner, and they get wrecked. Unfortunately, I'm hoping it doesn't happen, but it, then all of a sudden, governments really react, and I'm hoping we can do beyond that before that happens.
So, tied into what you mentioned a few, few seconds ago, for those that may be wondering, how come the police can't chase anymore, or how come they don't chase? Because the no pursuit policy was put in, for what Brian was talking about briefly, is the collateral damage that it creates, pedestrians, innocent people in street chases have gotten killed, and they're just innocent, but people on their, on their sidewalks, so that's why that was pared back and changed.
Second thing, kind of ties into the incoming budget, I've known this for many, many years, and I'm sure you have too, our first responders, our fire department, even police, ambulance, there are individuals. Our first responders, our fire department, even police, ambulance, there are individuals, either because of mental disorders or dependencies, drug, alcohol, whatever reason, they abuse our 911 system on a daily basis. Two, three times a day, five, six times a week, where our first responders go to, these people know the key words, so now, instead of it goes from a BLS to an ALS, where it's not just an EMT going, it's tower one with the paramedics, two, three times a day. And there's nothing more than, quote-unquote, "Lift assist." Um, I know the town has addressed this with certain individuals, but, like the state of Florida has the Baker Act, where the towns and cities have a little bit more leeway of helping these people, taking the burden off our first responders. But what has the town, is the town looking to do more? Because there's been quite a few.
Well, we've upgraded our 911 system, um, and we've added some people in previous budgets. And, um, so that's what we've done on that side. As far as the, whether it be mental health issues or substance abuse, um, we have counselors, we have, who have a lot of clients, who advise people whether it's, whether it's substance use disorder, whether it's alcoholism, whether it's domestic abuse, psychological problems, we have that set up. That's over, there are employees, but it's overseen by BH Care. So, but beyond that, the problem I see is there's so much undiagnosed mental health issues. And the reason we have security here, we've had three people, or at least two people, probably a third, one I chased out myself. I cha- actually chased this guy out, trying to create havoc with the staff. And, um, he ended up getting arrested. And, uh, but we've had, uh, our staff traumatized by people coming here threatening to kill us. That's why we have the security here. And each and every time, Brian, it was they lived by themselves, their family, they were disconnected from their family, and they were off their meds. Nobody was monitoring or managing the medical aspect of what they needed to be normal people in terms of productive people. We had one person come in here with seven different personalities. She was calling, trying to get to, or this person was calling, trying to get to me, disguising her voice, posing as mayor's in the area, wanted to talk to me about something, and the staff, of course, read right through it, uh, threatening us over the phone, and then ran in here one day when I was at a mayor's meeting, and threatened to kill Tammy and Valerie. So these, these are problems that are, that, I don't know how we can identify those mental health issues that are undiagnosed, because they're disenfranchised from their own families.
Well, I know the probate, sometimes towns can go in through the probate courts, uh, because again, we don't have a state law, like several states where people. But third thing is more economic development. With the closure of UPS Service Center on Sackapoye Road, what are the chances, or have you talked to UPS, uh, bringing in a, one of their franchise stores on Washington Avenue, or somewhere local, uh, that will help out people? Because now, I think the closest one is Whitney Avenue. Uh, there might be one in Staples and Hammond, I'm not sure, but I don't know if that's a thing that could be on your radar as far as economic, because I think that would be a plus to the town, because a lot of people use UPS.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. I haven't gotten that yet, because I have like forty-seven other projects I'm working on.
That's all?
No, seriously, about forty-seven projects I'm working on here. And, um, some are, are, are starting. Others, uh, I'm involved with are trying to bring these companies in, like Big Lots, that's the latest one, right? So, uh, the, the development, or the property owners in California, I've worked closely with them for years, we're identifying things there. You saw over on Washington Avenue, the old Donatos is taken down. I got this major project I'm trying to bring there. North of the Amazon driveway, I got three projects I'm working on there. So I haven't gotten to this yet, but I think you make a very good point on this.
That, that's something that, you know, it's, it's a small franchise compared to these other things, but it may be something that would benefit the town.
Right.
It's a UPS, everybody uses it one way or the other. A lot of people didn't know that they closed it.
Yeah.
By the time they got down there, they're like, "Now what do we do with this thing?"
And that's exactly why I was not as quick on this as I normally would be, because we didn't realize it at first. Unlike Big Lots, unlike years ago, Sports Authority moved right into action, and they got Hartford Healthcare there, right? Unlike Namco, which I'm hoping, and I'm not hoping, we're gonna be making an announcement as what's going there on Washington Avenue now, so, so we're more quicker on the response when we're notified that these places are closing.
Well, if you're not in small business and don't use UPS a daily, you would never know. And they didn't, they didn't even tell us. I just happen to know people down there, and young brother that works there said, "I might have a job, come August 26th, September 1st, we're done, and they're moving everything to their franchise."
Yeah.
So they won't, and that's just throughout the whole state, that's just not there. The whole region, they've shut down all their centers, and it's all franchise-based now, so. Might be something that, uh, somebody might be able to pick up, and I don't know what the cost is, but it's something that, it's franchise-based. Like, the only one I know of is Whitney Avenue, that's, and he's, he's getting slapped over there.
Oh, yeah, he does very well over there.
Yeah, he, he didn't even realize it until, I don't know, before the holidays, but hopefully we can do something with these street takeovers. Like I said, I showed you what I'm doing as a, as a resident, and people will follow up with it. It's, it's, it's a multi-stage thing. Can't be just laid onto your hands or, or just Hartford, it's gotta be everybody, but hopefully.
Just a, one final point for the public who might be wondering, or may have just joined us, what this is about. Brian sent me a letter, uh, recently, a few days ago, actually, on one of this, a private social media site, just to me, with a proposed letter as to how he wants to write his thoughts to the state of Connecticut, and every legislator, like he said, so that's what he's talking about right here, so.
Yeah, I started today. Start with the As and Bs, and I'm working my way down, 169 towns and cities, and I'm going to state reps, senators, and then the governor. I'll let you know if anybody answers.
I, hopefully.
Hopefully, it's a bipartisan thing. I think it is, it truly is. It shouldn't be a partisan thing. It's, it includes everyone.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Thank you.
And you do have, at least, and again, I'm just, you know, just mentioning, um, from having, um, from places I've worked, also having a FedEx account. And fortunately, we do have two FedEx locations still in town, for, you know, but you just wonder whether, um, I went to another FedEx location, and it was actually in, to pick something up, they got misdelivered, um, a personal thing, uh, this past week, and they actually had a small FedEx, um, uh, kiosk or whatever, in a Walgreens in Branford. So, but I, I think it's just regrettable that, you know, maybe they, they're not able to support it, and, you know, I think the postal service too is another alternative that has issues in terms of all the volume they've gotta pick up, and, you know, so much is actually delivered directly now by, you know, by, by big corporate, a big corporation like Amazon, that you, that it, but it does all of a sudden put a burden on you as a individual or as a business owner. So it's almost, uh, it's almost, um, a very, a very difficult situation when you've had that relationship in it. Obviously, and I know, because I know we use UPS as well, when I worked in Shelton, it goes away, you know? Maybe we pick up at our office even, so. Good luck. I know, but I'm sorry to, you know, I didn't know about that either, that was the first I've heard.
I said, "No idea about it in, in Dallas." That's why hopefully, if you get something in the center, it'll help the residents, because a lot of people use UPS.
They hate to have more accounts than you need, I mean, based on having a FedEx account, postal account and everything, so.
Any other questions? Tim Gabriel.
Yeah. Tim Gabriel, Renee Lane, uh, so just wanted to share, just because you've been talking about it before, um, that the legislation last year was HB 5413, just so that the public knows and that you guys know. It did not pass completely, it passed the House unanimously, so it seems like it would get a lot of support, um, if it wasn't reintroduced this session, which I'm sure it will be, but it did not advance to the Senate, so the Senate didn't have a chance to vote for it.
Oh, thank you for that.
As people know, there's like, uh, there's like a long session, uh, every other year, and then there's a short session, so last year was a short session. Uh, a lot of bills don't get to the finish line during the short session, so.
Yeah, so that's what happened there, then.
Yeah. But it did have like a number of the things, it talked about penalties, it talked about ordinances, it talked about grants and stuff like that, too, so it has a lot of the stuff that you discussed tonight.
There you go, folks, right there. The language was out there, I read the language, but Tim just, he clarified that it didn't go to the Senate, so, thank you for looking that up, Tim.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think the other thing, too, I think there was a good discussion as well, in terms of changing some of the age limits in terms of minors and stuff like that, um, because a lot of these situations are, you know, it's pretty scary, and from a safety standpoint, to see, you know, a 12-year-old or a 13-year-old driving, driving stolen vehicles or cars or whatever, that are, or ATVs or whatever, that are part of this, so. So I think it's a more complicated prob, it's a very complicated problem to resolve.
Well, that's a good point, too, because, you know, the car break-ins we've had here, they're kids 13, 14, and 15 years old, and, um, I think the juvenile age is either 17 or 18. So I had a meeting with police chiefs across the state, because I sit on post, police officer standard training, and, um, they'd like to see that, the juvenile age drop, but there's no appetite for it right now, um, because the majority of people at the state level feel that there should be diversionary programs for those children, rather than a hard-line arrest, and.
Yeah, and actually increasing the age as opposed to decreasing it.
Right, so.
Unless it's a certain type of felony.
So the age, the age, uh, limit was re, was dropped a few years ago, before Governor, Governor Lamont got involved, so that was before Governor Lamont. So there's been, uh, a, a movement to try to raise the age, so that, like in the case of North Haven, if there was a 14-year-old stealing a car on Skiff Street, uh, that, that he would have consequences to it. But there is not really an appetite right now to drop the age level on that. And that's unfortunately what we've seen in the region, these cars that are stolen, they're juveniles. When I was president of all the cities and towns a couple of years ago, I had a, a mayor called me from eastern Connecticut. He said, "Mike, we have to do something. We had a kid steal three cars in our town. First time we had to release him. He's 14 years old. He stole a car, that was at 9:30 in the morning. At 1:00 in the afternoon, he stole another car. He got caught, and he laughed at the cops. He said, 'You can't do anything to me.' They had to release him." And then at 5:30 that night, he stole a third car, the same kid, they had to release him, because he was a juvenile. Can I tell you one more story? Since we're on a story, a story mission tonight? It's just happened to me. The other problem we have in town, and I think you'll all agree, is reckless driving and speeding. So, the other night, around 9 o'clock, um, after a weightlifting session, I dressed in white, and I went for a run around my neighborhood. And I'm running, and I'm on the far right, around the curb, a delivery truck is coming around. So you would think there'd be enough space, right? The average road is 32 feet. I'm running at the curb, he should be coming around the corner, and what do I see? He's coming right at me. So he's in his left lane, I was in the right lane, and he's speeding. So I leap sideways from the street onto the lawn. And when he drove around the corner, he raised his arm, I wasn't really sure what he was referring to. So what I decided to do is, rather than continue the run around that street, I decided to run back and forth in that same area, hoping that he would come back the way he entered. 10 minutes went by, and here he comes. I said, "This is perfect." Now, you're gonna be surprised, you're gonna say, "Why would you do this, Mike?" I stopped running, and I stood in the middle of the street like this. He stopped. And the first thing he said was, "I apologize." I said, "You should apologize, because I'm sick and tired of people speeding on the streets here in North Haven. I'm sick and tired of the reckless driving, and you of all people, you're a delivery driver. What if I wasn't able to jump out of the way? What were you thinking? 'I'm sorry, I'm sorry, man, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.'" So then I identified who I was, and he, he was traumatized, because I looked different, right? I wasn't, I didn't have a jacket and tie and a suit on, right? Baseball hat, all, all wrapped up in white. "You know, John, in a tie, you know, what do you have?" So. So I said, "We have, we have a couple of options here. I'm gonna give you two choices. I have your name, I have the name of your company right there on the side, and I have your license plate. I can either call the police now and detain you here and have you arrested, even though I knew I couldn't technically do that." Oh, he got nervous, he really got nervous. "Or I can call your company tomorrow and, and tell them who I am and have you fired. Which option would you prefer?" "I'm sorry, man, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Why, what were you doing?" "Well, my phone rang when I was coming around the corner." "And you took the call? Is that what you did? That's what you're telling me?" "Well, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, man, please, please." He goes, "Please, please, I need this job, I have four kids," he was saying. And I kind of believed him, because he had a tear coming down his eye, right? I said, "I'll tell you what. I still have the name of your company, and I still have your license plate, but you and I are gonna have an agreement here tonight," I said. "We're gonna have an agreement, and that agreement is, is that you will never speed on any street in North Haven when you're making deliveries, because if you do, we're gonna find you." "I, I promise, I'm my, I'm my kids," he was saying, "Sir, I promise." He was going like this, "I promise." I said, "All right, we have an agreement?" "Well, well, well, do we have an understanding?" I said to him. "Yes, sir, I do, we do." "All right, all right, go. But I'm gonna be watching you, as you're, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue my run and follow you around this street." And that was the end of it. So the point of this story is, that's another problem, reckless driving and speeding. And it's very difficult, and this is what I want you to know, whether it's littering, Valley Service Road, tires, construction debris, Universal Drive, we've spent thousands and thousands of taxpayers' dollars cleaning up messes. Universal Drive had two public work guys out there for eight hours, cleaning up from Sims Medical Management all the way to Sackapoye Road. Two days later, you would've never known they were there. Valley Service Road, we're putting streetlights on there now. Thousands of dollars of our money spent cleaning up. So the point of this story is this, local governments having a very difficult time controlling the bad behavior of the people that are in the town, driving through the town. You get people coming in off the highways, dumping McDonald's bags in the middle of the street. It's a problem, folks. But the good guys are gonna win, believe me. That's where we're at.
You gotta be more careful out there, you're, you're, you know.
I, I'll tell you.
What do you, you said yourself, "What are you, crazy? What are you, crazy?"
I said.
There, I said it.
But I, I felt I had to do it.
Yeah, no, I understand, but it's dangerous, you don't know, you know?
At that moment?
People shoot at each other over far less.
You know, Sally's right about this, but I'll be honest with you, you know, and this is the other side of my personality, in the moment, I was fearless in this moment. I, I, I didn't think about that at all. At first, when I moved to the middle of the street, as I was walking in the middle of the street, I said to myself, "What are you doing?" But once I got in that moment, I didn't care. I really didn't.
I understand, but you're lucky. Yeah, but be careful.
So I think, I think that can, what contributes to the problem, too, is, um, you know, apps like a, you know, GPS-type app, and I, you know, on my road, which is really a residential road, I, you know, and, I guess, I, I know this happens in other areas that are even, even more residential. Um, the, the app will direct you to go, you know, the shortest distance is to cut through somebody's resident, you know, through a residential area. So I, and one day, I just happened to be in front of my house, and I was out walking, and 20 cars came around the corner, short one up to the light to get back on Route 22, and I counted 19 of the 20, 20 cars taking a left-hand turn going down 22 toward North Branford. And that just told me that all those cars used a residential area as a cut through, to get off of Washington Avenue, and they're doing that all over the place. And I see people, um, you know, through the Grove and everything, using that as a cut through, and, you know, and just because I think their, their app is directing them to do that, and these people are getting off 91 or, um, off the Merritt Parkway, and their, um, their shortest distance between two points is what their car tells them. And I think if they're looking at their little phone, or they don't even have a screen there, they're not paying any attention when they're driving half the time. And, and, you know, if the speed limit's 25 or 30, um, they're not paying, they're just used to going 40 or 50, and they're paying no attention to where they're going, because they're trying to figure out how to. they're trying to figure out how to use side roads as a cut through. And so I think it's really a tough problem to fix. I mean, you know, and again, you know, I, I'm very much in favor of speed bumps, so.
Next.
And we can, and I found we can definitely take the speed bumps up in the wintertime when they need to plow. So I don't know if we have, we need bonding for speed bumps.
Well, it's a whole other subject.
But I don't think, I don't think we're going to get that.
I don't think the fire department likes the speed bumps.
No, that, that's exactly, and that, and that's exactly the other side of, the other side of the coin, you're exactly right, is that police and fire, you know, even, even if there's not a plowing problem, you know, with all the calls that we have for medical purposes, we really can't have speed bumps.
Yep.
Well, it's a new year, and we're not going to solve all these problems tonight, but it's, it's been interesting, the way this has, has happened, all these topics are, are important to us all, and we all want to feel safe in our town. So it's a new year, let's work together.
So we presented to you tonight a different version of this Board of Selectment. So to kick off this new year. So I hope you enjoyed some of the dialogue, a couple of stories, but seriously, these are problems we're experiencing right now.
Okay.
So.
And we want everybody to be selfless. Whatever, whatever we can do to make people safe and healthy, we, we want everybody to be safe and healthy in 2025.
Yes, we do. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, second. All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.